It is with great sadness that I call this board meeting to order. I just a few minutes ago received news that we've lost a great friend of Ventura County, Bert Bigler. And so as we stop for a moment of reflection, I'd like us all to keep Bert and his family in our thoughts. And I'll have more information at Board Comment time from the family if they have that information yet about services, et cetera. So you would stand, please, for a moment of reflection about Bert.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag and of our heart, ready to begin.
My flag is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bert was such a gentle and kind soul. It's going to be, he'll be on our thoughts for quite some time here. I'll take a motion for the minutes of October 5th. Moved and seconded, the motions of October 5th. Is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Wong.
I'd like to ask that we have a continuing to November 9, the item that of course I'm, sorry, it gets re-grouped here, on the item regarding the Fillmore Watership Protection District.
Item 28?
Yes. Item 28 and to November 9.
All righty. Other agenda review items?
Mr. Chairman, there are a couple. Item number 33 has a revised board letter. And item 21, we're requesting be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for a revised contract. And Mr. Carroll will be here to explain the changes.
That was item 21?
Correct. Item 21.
Revised letter.
No, item 21 is to be put on the reg, okay.
But item 21, all right.
And item 33 has a revised board letter.
And so item 21 pulled to regular items. Okay, so number 21, regular agenda item. Other agenda review items? Anybody? All right. I'd like to have a motion to accept the revisions to the agenda.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objections? Seeing none, the agenda stands as amended this morning. We're at consent, a consent calendar. We have no speakers for consent calendar, do we, Clerk? Okay. Consent calendar, we have items 9 to 25, except for item 21.
Do we have any? I missed that. Are there any cards?
No, there are no cards.
I would move the agenda as amended.
Moved and seconded for the consent calendar. Is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. We're now at public comment, and I have two people that have turned in public comment cards for item 7, three people now for item 7. And then just so we have it here, Mr. Moore, you're turning cards for both, so you're on for public comment. Mr. Friedman, you turned in cards for item 28, so that's been postponed. Item 28 has been postponed.
I'd like to change to public comment.
Then you'd like to change it to public comment. That's what I wanted to ask you. Great, thank you. Okay. And we have our Treasury Tax Collector here, and Mr. Matheny is our first public speaker during public comment period.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Lawrence Matheny, your Treasury Tax Collector. I just wanted to inform the board that we completed the mailing of 242,000 property tax bills for the 0405 roll. We're expecting to collect something in the neighborhood of $879 million for the entities in the county of Ventura who live and breathe off of that source of revenue. That represents an increase of just a shade under $75 million over last year's roll. So we've got our shirt sleeves rolled up and we're ready to bring it in. We finished up last year with 98.8 percent of the roll collected, which put us in, tied for sixth place in the county, in the state. So the property taxpayers in the county of Ventura are being extremely fantastic citizens and are helping us to make, in a difficult time, ends meet.
Great. Thanks for that good news.
Can I ask a question?
Supervisor Parks.
How does the 75 million that you're receiving, Moore, how does that compare to what you anticipated during the budget process?
There is no extra money.
Yeah. I believe that we had the, pretty close to the actual roll figures that went into the budget process, so this is projected into the budget, this amount.
Okay. Because I know Los Angeles County all of a sudden received more than they were anticipating, but we're not as fortunate. We're just what we thought we were going to get.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, yes. The fortunate part is, is that our analysis and predictions are accurate. There just isn't any surprise money, right?
It's because we're so good at predicting.
Love to have a nook and cranny where there was a little bit more, but.
Closer to my projection, I think. Which came right out of my gut.
Excellent. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Armando Vasquez.
I'm here again, and I'll continue to come on behalf of the Oxnard Plains community. Our young people, the Sevenin' County, those people that we've decided with, actually negotiated with the police department to assist, have not received services yet from the county. These young people are not traditional, we're talking about the gang and junket young people. They're not people that can wait and wait and wait, their lives being so fractured that from one day to the next, they're in jail. I had the good opportunity to be in the presence of Supervisor Bennett over the weekend, and he talked about responsibility. I like the idea of responsibility, but I also like the idea of responsibility both ways. I sit on the board of the Workforce Investment Youth Board. You're going to be hearing some news in the next two or three weeks. I promise that I wouldn't speak much to that today. However, my concern right now is with the adult board that handles roughly, and you may ask Ms. Fonzo, she's here present, roughly $4 million of adult training and job placement monies. I am begging, I am asking, I'll come and clean your lawns, I'll paint your house, I'll do whatever I need to do to get these young people into county servicing. I'm asking you, please, to look at this situation. The police have stepped up, they're willing to work with us. We need the county involved so we can develop jobs. Ms. Amy Fonzo has indicated that she's going to work with me with respect to this nice little ad that was in the paper, and all it is is a PR thing. It says that Grant helps WIB bring Ventura County jobs for fire cleanup. These young people could do that. I'm told by Ms. Fonzo that there's a delay, that there's a problem. Let's get to the problem and let's fix it. There's lots of jobs available, according to the article. Clerical work, truck driver, carpet cleaner, security guard, warehouse. These young people could all fit into that. That's a million dollars, young, ladies and gentlemen, sitting in a bank account that could be used to help our people. Please help us out. I will continue to be requesting respectfully that you look at this situation and please help us. There's a lot of money in the county coffers right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this morning, Mr. Vasquez. Dwight Moore?
My name is Dwight Moore. Good morning. I've provided you with copies of my remarks of July 2, 2002.
Is this the same letter that you gave us last week?
No, it isn't.
Great.
I was hoping that everybody had read last week's letter already. All of you were present when I made those remarks, except Linda Parks, Supervisor Linda Parks. And it's important for you to go back and remember how long ago it was when I first brought this to your attention. And this, these remarks were pretty thorough. I will reprise them for you. It isn't often that I speak before you, but when I do, it's because I have something important for you to hear. Recently, the City Council of Fillmore voted to request that the Federal Emergency Management Agency move the regulatory floodway of the Santa Clara River to facilitate the construction of a three-mile-long levee and 750 homes, most of which are within the 100-year flood plain. The city of Fillmore's action was surprising considering that 97% of over 100 Fillmore residents who signed a one-day poll at our Vision 2020 Street Fair said they were opposed to the city approving any more development in the Santa Clara River floodplain. But then again, the city's action was not surprising if you remember that it was the City Council of Fillmore that stabbed the county of Ventura in the back by pulling out of a suit against New Hall Ranch. Environmental issues in the two projects are identical: flooding possibilities, traffic and air quality degradation, groundwater depletion, and endangerment of significant habitat. It is entirely possible that the long-term effects of Fillmore's 750-home project will be greater than that of New Hall Ranch on Ventura County. The city of Fillmore, which calls itself the last best small town in Southern California, is now the fastest-growing city in Ventura County. You don't propose the construction of a three-mile-long levee for just 750 homes. The city took this action without any study on the possible environmental ramifications of moving the Santa Clara River towards Bardstown. What is most amazing is that the Ventura County Flood Control District ignored the responsibilities to the Board of Supervisors and other communities along the Santa Clara River and agreed to support Fillmore's request to move the Santa Clara River into Bardstown. The city of Fillmore couldn't take this action by itself because the proposed new floodway was in the county. It was outside the city limits, and oh, but a small portion of it was outside even the city's sphere of influence. Ventura County Flood Control's action is troubling for three reasons. Moving the floodway and building a levee on the north bank will push floodwaters into Bardstown. Two, any limiting of the natural functions of the floodplain, including its ability to store floodwaters, will increase flood hazards downstream in Santa Paula, Ventura, and Oxnard. Three, this action follows another where Ventura County Flood Control and the city of Fillmore approved the construction of another levee and a large housing development partially built into the floodway of the Santa Clara River without first getting FEMA approval to move the floodway. Ventura County Flood Control's failure to follow FEMA regulations resulted in many residents of that development paying higher flood insurance premiums. I call on the Board of Supervisors, and listen carefully, to revoke Ventura County Flood Control's approval of an application to FEMA to change the floodway at Fillmore and to require an environmental study and public hearings before any floodway change is made on the Santa Clara River. The property and lives of many who live along the Santa Clara River deserve nothing less. Thank you. I hope I don't have to read this again two years from now.
Thank you for your testimony this morning, Mr. Moore. Mr. Friedman?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Clarence Freeman. I live in Fillmore. I have a letter which I wrote to Supervisor Flynn, and I hope you all have copies of it.
We do.
And I have a reduced drawing of the one I showed last Tuesday, I guess it was, showing the location of the Pole Creek watershed in regards to the Heritage Valley project. And the scale of this drawing is 1 inch equal 3,000 feet. And you can see how it overlooks the Heritage Valley development, and it's going to be sitting there forever, that watershed, a 8.5-square-foot watershed. Pole Creek built up the alluvial fan on which Fillmore sits. Perhaps 100 years ago, the path of Pole Creek going through Fillmore made it very difficult to develop Fillmore. And in order to reduce the flooding danger of Pole Creek, it was turned almost 90 degrees at the apex of the alluvial fan, which is 170 feet above the river. And so it sort of got, was run out of town, you might say, along the east boundary of Fillmore. Now, after 1974, the Pole Creek line channel, even when in eroded condition, did provide some protection for a very flood-prone area. There was very little, there was practically no development east of the east boundary of Fillmore, and there was only relatively light development along the, along Pole Creek. Now, apparently now Heritage Valley Parks will deliver 750 homes to the area downstream and along Pole Creek. Pole Creek will then regress and regain some of the original flood risk that it has before it was diverted to flow into the Santa Clara River rather than Sespe Creek. Thus, if you don't have enough flooding problems in an area, build and move in more people and more homes. The Pole Creek watershed will hang over Heritage Valley Parks like a sword of Damocles, perilously, forever as a flooding danger, but it'll also be within the Santa Clara River levee, which is a separate dangerous flood story. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Friedman. That ends our public comments here this morning. We're now ready for board comments. I think I'm going to take the liberty of starting just to mention a few things here with regards to Bert. Bert passed away last night in his home. I think we all know that he'd been suffering from cancer for some time. Bert was teaching at CLU and CSU Northridge in their master's program. He was teaching, somebody told me, as recently as a month ago, that he was still working and teaching. He was working in the budgeting and master's, government public policy, using all the skills, et cetera, that he developed here and passing those on. He has seven sons and two grandchildren, and at this point in time, the family has not determined when the services will be. I'm sure we will find some way to pass that information throughout the county here as soon as we have that information. And so as I mentioned at the beginning, we lost. And so as I mentioned at the beginning, when you lose a soul as gentle as Burt, I think it has a special impact on all of us. So we'll now turn this over to the supervisor. Supervisor Parks, I believe, today starts.
Thank you. Just yesterday, I was working with one of his students who is taking, I guess, the class out of CLU on government. And I just, it's noteworthy that he had such an impression on the students and was able to carry on for him, I think, in some sense. And then also what a wonderful role model he was for us all. I'd also ask that, in addition to Burt, that we close in honor of the people on my list. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. I ask that the Board adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I'd like to make a couple of comments about Burt Bigler. I think I've been a supervisor during the same period of time as his tenure here in the county. And if you, when I look at my mind's eye, I can see his face and a smile. He always had a smile on his face, such a kind human being and so knowledgeable. He brought these budgets forward for a long time and always knew the subject matter very well. He was a very religious person, and I think his feelings about God had an impact on most of us. So I will very definitely miss him.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
If I may, I'm sorry. Let me just tell you the reason that I put the Fillmore item on the agenda. My father served, and conditions are different, I understand that, but he served on a rescue team in the 1928 flood here in Ventura County, where 300 people died. And then we've had the experience of floods, especially the 1969 flood, which knocked out the Port of Ventura and several other things. You'd see cars rolling down the river. It was devastating. So anytime an issue comes up about the floodway or the floodplain, it draws my attention. True, it's outside of my district, but it affects everyone in the watershed. Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
I too will express sympathy for the Bigler family and for the county, the county family in the loss of Burt Bigler. He was truly a gentleman who loved his job, dedicated much of his life to his job, although he always had a priority for his sons and his family and spoke of them often. As a staff person, Burt always took time to answer questions and give information, whether you were a staff person or an elected official. He was very generous in his time and his knowledge and his love for the county. He will truly be missed. That's all I have to say this morning.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, thank you. All of the right things and the true things have been said about Burt, and he will be missed. Our heart does go out to his family. He did have very deep religious beliefs, and we often talked about the fact that we're all just on loan here from the good Lord, and we're to do whatever it is that we can do. And I do take much comfort in the fact that I'm sure his family, due to their very deep religious beliefs, are comforted knowing that Burt is with the Father and that he is in the better place and the best place and that they will soon meet. That's kind of a basic part of their beliefs. And there's a joy in knowing, in that religion, that they will be reunited. For me, when I came on the board, Burt was such a help with budget information, just everything to, you know, telling me where I could find things that I needed in the county, who to talk to. And I think the one thing that was true, and Supervisor Flynn said it, he always could have a smile on his face in the middle of budget hearings, in the middle of the board somewhat bickering back and forth about, you know, pennies, dimes, and nickels, so to speak. He'd always smile and say, well, get that information to you, you know, we'll let you know what you've just done, and never really showed the pressure of the job. And I think that that has a lot to do with his just basic human kindness and basically his faith, that he was doing what he was here to do. And so to his family, we'll miss him, you'll miss him, but he's in a good place now. So with that, I would also ask that the county, the Board of Supervisors adjourn in memory of the people on this list from my communities.
Thank you very much, and I'll ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and we will try to get this information out as soon as we know more. And in fact, I'll pass this on. If staff does find out about the timing of services while the Board is still meeting, if you'll get that information down to us, I will announce it during the meeting in case people are listening and be able to get that information out to people through this venue. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you want to say at this point in time under board comments? I mean, it's, no, it's board comments, but about Mr. Bigler.
It's pretty much all been said, but, you know, Burt was one of those great examples for everybody, you know. He was a hard worker. He provided public service selflessly, and he, like you said, he worked right up to the end. He sort of passed some of the genetic memory of the institution along to the younger people as they come along, who will be the future. He did it both through the university and through our office, and my heart goes out to his family. I know how close they were and how difficult it is in a large family with one of the parents, you know, untimely passing.
Thank you very much. We're ready for item 21, the consent item that was pulled to the regular agenda, and that's...
Morning, Mr. Bennett.
Good morning.
Members of the Board, Mr. Johnson, Matt Carroll, Chief Information Officer. Item 21 presents an opportunity for the county to participate in advanced testing of PeopleSoft's newest product release for its human resources and payroll system. Due to the late timeframe or very short timeframe, we were given between the opportunity to begin testing and get the agreement before your Board, we have a couple of quick changes we need to disclose to your Board. First, in Section 7, which governs the nondisclosure obligations of the two parties, it previously stated that the terms would be subject to the Public Records Act for our obligations. We're modifying that to be the terms of the agreement will not be disclosed, subject to the terms of both the Public Records Act and the Ralph N. Brown Act. In Section 11, which govern the venue, in case of disputes, we are changing that venue to Ventura County for state court issues or state court jurisdictional issues, and we're changing it to the Central District of California for federal court jurisdictional issues. And finally, in the recommendations, recommendation number two recommends your Board authorize myself to sign future such agreements that have no financial obligation to the county, since there'll obviously be or likely be short timeframes associated with them as well. We're adding that that be subject to the concurrence of the County Executive Office, Auditor Controller, Risk Management, and County Council, so it will go through the proper reviews before that is executed by me on your behalf. So with that, 21 is offered for your approval.
Great. Do we have any questions? Move approval? Been moved and seconded? Thank you. I think those are appropriate things to pull off the consent calendar, so I appreciate you doing it that way. Okay, we have considerable time before our 9:30 time certain, and so we can move to item 30, Healthcare Agency Authorization to Submit Application to State Department Health Services for Preventative Care for the Aging Program Grant.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the Board, Paul Lorenz, Public Health Department. Item number 30 is a request for your Board's authorization to submit an application to the State Department Health Services for a preventive healthcare for the aging program. This is an opportunity that we are looking forward to as we're able to work with many community centers, in fact, close to 14 throughout the county, to ensure that we're able to identify health issues among individuals that are 55 and older and further them for appropriate services. This also allows to draw down some federal funds to actually expand the program and ensure that we are actually serving the community to the best of our ability. Are there any questions? I'm happy to...
Move approval? Second? Moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're at item 31, and you're on again.
Item 31 is a ratification and approval of our bioterrorism grant and contract with State Department Health Services. We continue to make steady progress in our preparations in working with local law enforcement agencies and other organizations and healthcare entities throughout the county. We are pleased with our progress, although there's still much work to be done. If there are specific questions regards to this project, I'm more than happy to respond.
Supervisor Michaels?
My question on this one and the next one is, these are ratification and approval, but there's no explanation of why they were applied for prior to coming to the Board in the letter. Can you just briefly cover that for the record?
The item that's before you, item 31, which is the bioterrorism contract, is a contract that we fully expected to receive funding for five consecutive years. The issue here had to do with the timeliness of the agreement between the State Department Health Services and the Centers for Disease Control, which subsequently pushed this contract all the way into the fall, and we are here today. We received the contract from the state just a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Anything else? I would just point out for the benefit of everyone that these bioterrorism grants are helping us beef up some of the aspects of our emergency response that'll help us in all kinds of areas in terms of public health that many people may not traditionally associate with terrorism necessarily. So, great, we have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
And it's been seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 32, the new parents contract.
Excuse me. Item 32 is once again a ratification and approval of a contract with the First Five of Ventura County. The State First Five Commission provides what they call kits for new parents, and this kit provides a host of information, educational material, media, and so forth, to ensure that they have the information for their newborn. The Health Department has been approached by the First Five Commission of Ventura County to work with them to further that effort and to ensure that we, in fact, are combining our resources in the most effective manner, since as a health department, we do work with the maternal-child health population extensively.
Great. Any questions? Moved and seconded. Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. That takes care of our healthcare agency items. CEO's office, item 33, with the revised board letter.
Marty Robinson with the Kennedy Ex-Office.
We having a little voice problem, sir? Sorry. Hope you're going to be all right.
Thank you. Before you today is a recommendation to amend the campaign finance ordinance. Over the first campaign cycle for, excuse me, over the first campaign cycle, the Board had asked our office to keep track of changes that might need to be made and clarifications that might need to be made. So staff in the commission has done that, and we've identified language that should be added for clarity and operational purposes. So before you today, you have some of those kinds of changes, such as the change of a three-month, say, in three months, 90 days instead of three months. Also before you are changes of a policy nature that your Board may want to discuss. These came up as a result of activities that we have brought before the Board over the last five months, such items as potentially changing, eliminating the ratio requirements, the ratio of political parties on the Campaign Finance Review Committee. So they are presented here today for your further discussion and deliberation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff?
Not really a question, but a comment. I certainly heard the irrational rationale for eliminating the party ratio requirement, but it seems to me in a county that has this many qualified people in it that that should not really be an issue in finding appropriate candidates to be appointed. We did have a little hiccup, and that was a political choice and decision of someone they certainly have the right to make, and that wasn't a horrible thing, but I just, I haven't been convinced yet that we need to do that, and I think that there's a good reason to maintain that balance, and it's a kind of an unseen tension that I think is good to keep in situations like that. But that's my comment on...
Okay. Supervisor Parks?
I just have a question about a word, because I interpret it differently, and I think the layman would interpret it the way I do, and if we can come up with a better one, I think that would be better. It's page number nine, section 1282, and it's used in other portions of this document too. And what it states is, "All contributions by a person made on behalf of or to a county candidate are contributions from the person to the candidate." The word "on behalf of" a candidate, to me, indicates "at the request of" a candidate, and that is not the intent of this language. So I would just ask that maybe County Council could come up with a different word there, and I'm sure it'll be acceptable.
Would you prefer "for the benefit of"?
Yes. "For the benefit of" would be just, that would be, to me, meaning what I would understand it to me. So I would request that we make that change if there isn't a problem. And it appears on a second, at least one other place that I saw too. And that, in your mind, County Council doesn't change the content or intent by changing those few words?
Well, in my view, the words "on behalf of" are similar to "for the benefit of", import the same thing.
Okay. I would request that we make that change.
Are you speaking as a layman or a professional? Just as someone who speaks the English language.
You know, I disagree...
Speaking it isn't the difficulty, it's interpreting that we have difficulty with.
Yeah. And that's why I disagree. I think if you do look in the dictionary, when you say "on behalf of," that means "at the request of," you know, that's not necessarily "for the candidate." It's "at the candidate's request." So with that change, I certainly support the changes that are recommended by staff. And I just also have to say, you know, going through this, and I have worked on campaign reform ordinances in the past, just how nice this is. It's just, it seems like it really covers everything completely, and I feel very confident with this. So I do appreciate the effort that went into this because it's the finest ordinance I have seen.
Before the Board takes action, there is also one typo that needs to be changed. On page eight, section 1275G, there's, an "any" should be an "and," so we'll provide that to...
Page eight?
Page eight, section 1275G.
Okay.
Says candidate may not make independent expenditures, any may contribute. It should be "and may." It should be "and."
"And may not," so the "why" should be changed to an "and"?
Right.
Okay. That's how they slip through spell check, isn't it? All right, so we have one change there.
Didn't slip through my eagle eye.
Just want to make sure I get this language straight, Supervisor Parks, so on 1282, it's going to say "all contributions by a person made benefiting..."
Made to benefit.
"Made to benefit a county candidate?" Is that what you're saying? "Made for the benefit..." Read me what you got there.
Substitute the words "for the benefit of" in place of the words "on behalf of." Substitute the words "for the benefit of" in place of the words "on behalf of."
And "else" in places where it also is in this document, we can make those same changes?
To be certain we get the ordinance done accurately, then, we would have to, I think, probably comb through the ordinance, and in that case, this first reading should be continued, and staff should bring it back with those changes.
Okay, 'cause I did find it in other places.
Can you identify where else you found it?
I found it in at least one other place, but it may be in other places too. I think a spell check or something could find it better.
Is there an issue with continuing it one week?
There's no time constraint.
Right, okay. Okay, so I just wanna, what I don't wanna do is get here next week and go find something else, 'cause we've been doing that, so I just wanted to know where it all was, so I could see.
And I did bring it up to staff previous to this meeting.
Great, okay. All right, do we have anything else on this?
Let me just ask a question, it kinda relates, but not completely. Does the Ethics Committee, it's still idle, it hasn't done anything right?
They have been meeting, and staff has been making reports on...
The testing has come before.
They have been, we have received, they have received no complaints.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a motion to continue this item for another week.
Move to continue for one week.
Been moved and seconded to continue this item for one more week. Is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. That's item 33, continued. Item 34, District Attorney's Office requests approval of supplemental funding for various school districts for the truancy services.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, Board members, Mr. Johnson. I'm Mel Chambers with the DA's office. This particular item, before you ask, recommends two actions. One is to approve some supplemental funding in the amount of $39,900 from 13 school districts within the county for the truancy program that we have. And the second item is to process the appropriate budgetary transactions. This is something that the DA has been working with school districts for a number of months on, and DA recommends your support of this, this issue at this time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Moved the item.
Moved and seconded, is there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're at item 35. That's recommendation to reappoint Kathy Long to the Board of Directors of CSAC. Supervisor Long has been very diligent in doing what is a challenging task, and that is getting out and making many of those long trips to CSAC meetings around the state. And so she's been a fine representative for us, and I'd recommend that we reappoint her.
Move approval, and thank you for doing all the work.
Second.
All right. So thank you for doing that work. It's moved and seconded, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. We're at item 36, and that's my recommendation, we adopt a resolution prohibiting the use of expandable, I'm gonna say styrofoam rather than the technical name for this particular item. And there are a couple of things I'd like to point out to the board. Paper and cardboard substitutes are readily available at comparable cost. This isn't a cost issue if we ban styrofoam. The disposable food containers at county facilities rarely involve trips longer than from the counter to the table, so to say that we have to have something styrofoam to keep something warm when we're not moving it very far doesn't make a lot of sense. Cities that also have this banned include Berkeley, San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, Laguna Hills, Elisa Viejo, Huntington Beach, and there's a reason why you see those coastal communities leading the way. Just one, and I remember seeing it when I was growing up, you know? You get fooling around, you break a styrofoam ice chest at the beach, and all of a sudden it's fun to break it again and break it again, and suddenly you have hundreds of pieces of styrofoam all over the beach, which then gets into the water and does not biodegrade, and then the fish consume it, and you have lots of species that are endangered. McDonald's and Burger King, among other restaurant chains, have switched completely from styrofoam to paper and cardboard. Litter reduction will assist the county keep the beaches, parks, roads, and storm drains clean. The ordinance only applies to vendors, not to private individuals, so you're not gonna out there trying to police every private individual and try to stop that. There'll be no, there'll be no inspection, within 30, there'll be no inspection of picnic baskets, right? It's easily implementable, since all the county vendors and leases and concessionaires. The fiscal impact will be very small, and it'll be entirely borne by the lessees and their customers if it's passed on, and styrofoam ranks second in terms of all the material collected at the beach cleanup day. So with that, I would move the recommended action, which is to adopt the attached resolution prohibiting the use of expandable polystream food service products at the county harbor parks, government center, and county-sponsored events.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any objection? Seeing none, motion carries. And we're at item 37, Correspondents' Agenda. We are roaring through our agenda today.
Second.
Move to receive and file the Correspondents' Agenda. We now have 9:30 item, but do we have some things we can knock out in closed session? Good, we'll go ahead and go into closed session, we'll come back out close to 9:30 here for our 9:30 items, and I'll remind everybody, we have 11 o'clock APCD meeting, so it is good that we're moving promptly today.
Okay, the board is back in session. Our apologies, our closed session. We had an issue that we kept thinking we were within minutes of resolving. That took a little bit... a little bit longer than we thought. Before we start into the 9:30 item, the clerk has indicated that there are some people here for the 10 o'clock item, and those people, if you're here for the 10 o'clock item, I want to let you know that during agenda review, we decided to postpone that to November 9th. It will be a time certain, but the time certain has not been determined yet. So if you're here for the 10 o'clock, item 28, that's the watershed protection district issues with regard to Heritage Valley, that's been postponed just till November 9th. And so we're now ready for our 9:30 item. Supervisor Long, Ventura County Mediation Week.
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to bring this to the Board with the Board's support to proclaim October 17th through the 23rd as Ventura County Mediation Week. I'd like to acknowledge and invite those who wish to to the front to speak to this. Judge Smiley was here, but he had to leave, get back to court. But certainly it was Jim Lingle from the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlements, who has been working on this for a long time now, and a pleasure to bring this forward. Gil Campos, also with the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlements. Carolyn Neely, I don't see Carolyn, oh, there's Carolyn, from Neely Mediation. And I'd like to take just a moment to offer congratulations to Mr. Campos, who's been appointed the lead mediator for the court-ordered mediation between law enforcement and the Oxnard community members on the gang injunction issues. And you're going to have a real tough test and challenge of your skills, Mr. Campos. But in acknowledging Ventura County Mediation Week, conflict is unfortunately a common event in our society, and our citizens both need and seek forms for the resolution of conflict other than through our courts. And the judicial resolution of disputes can be unnecessarily costly, time-consuming, and complexed when achieved through formal court proceedings in which the parties are adversarial and are subjected to formalized proceedings. Mediation is one of those significant tools that is a non-coercive and collaborative process that uses specially-trained mediators to resolve disputes within organizations, businesses, neighborhoods, families, and citizens with a goal of a resolution that is mutually acceptable to all parties. The state of California has promoted mediation efforts through the enactment of several mediation statutes, including the Dispute Resolution Programs Act, under which counties may fund dispute resolution programs through court filing fees. In an effort to resolve conflict amicably, improve relations among our citizens within neighborhoods and families, and to relieve the burden of litigation that overwhelms our judiciary, many of our citizens have successfully turned to dispute resolution services, which have offered positive social, economic, and personal benefits. So in bringing this proclamation forward, this resolution to declare October 17th through the 23rd as Ventura County Mediation Week, it gives us an opportunity to thank our professionals and salute them for their efforts, both in the public and the private sectors, and what they provide and the benefits for effective dispute resolution to our citizenry. So I'd like to step down now and provide this again in support of our local nonprofit agencies, organizations for providing mediations to our citizenry. Mr. Lingle, if you'd like to, and certainly Mr. Campos, Ms. Neely.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, we also have some other people here today supporting mediation, including Greg Brolle, who's representing the District Attorney's Office and their Consumer Mediation Service, several of the superior members of the District Attorney's Office. We had a representative from Interface, who's the third of the DERPA recipients from Ventura County, and Frank Chow, who's from the CEO's office and who administers the DERPA program. They're all here to show their support to mediation and what it offers. So, thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to then thank everybody, the members of the Board of Supervisors, for their actually very, very important support. Although I'm the President of the Board of Directors of BCDS, I think I speak on behalf of all the mediators in Ventura County, both the professionals and the volunteers, to really express our appreciation of the Board for their recognition of this very, very important part of the dispute resolution process. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
We now have our other 9:30 item, and that's our CEO giving us our budget and finance update, which served us so well last year to stay on top of our budget as the year went along.
So all the yellow tags have a signature? Okay. Waiting for the clerk to get us out of closed session on the board there.
Right. Well, it still says we're in closed session. Some of our minds, it may imply that our minds are closed, and we wouldn't want to do that.
Okay, I get the nod from the clerk. This is not what you'd call late-breaking news, it's more in the category in the field of education, they always tell us when teaching or training, "You should tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them, and then tell them what you told them," and hope some of it sticks. So this particular review is just to kind of bring us back up to date as to where we are on rather a long and tortuous journey back to fiscal responsibility in local government, and that is to balance the budget, and then to find a way to avoid the kind of problems that the state and the county have gone through in the past year or two with reductions in force and reductions in program. So I'm pleased to report to you that the key points here are that the county budget, as you know, was adopted and is balanced. It did require some use of fund balance on a one-time-only basis with a rationale that the state of California will reimburse that money to us. So we are out of the structural deficit business, at least for the time being, assuming that the current rules hold. The state of California has also adopted their budget. They have not caught up with us, they do have a structural deficit. They have a substantial deficit that is going to carry forward for at least two years, and that has been what has pressured local government substantially in the last couple of years, because when the state is out of money, one of the ways in which they balance theirs has been to come to local government and to shift funds around. The third bullet is that fiscal stability requires a long-term approach, and one of the things that will be on the ballot here in November is an attempt to come up with such a long-term approach, which is to stabilize local government revenues, and I think Supervisor Long may have a few comments on that, I don't know whether she wants to make them now or later, but the point is, is that we can't just be looking at what's right in front of the car, we've got to kind of be looking up the road to be sure we don't crash, and the state of California needs to follow a similar process. And so the good news is, is that we're well on the road to making all those corrections, and the outlook for next year is, is that if everything holds, we will not go through the trauma that the county had to be put through this year with reduction in workforce and reduction in programs. If the state of California cuts programs, then the policy of the county is, if they do not provide the funding and they cut the program, at the present time, we are not in a position to finance state government, and so we will have to reflect that. But at least the local programs and the decisions your Board makes are at a stage where financially we're sound, we are at a sustainable level, and we're hoping that that continues. I put this slide on there, you've seen it before during budgets, but it sort of illustrates the dilemma of our government, but of all local county governments, and that is, if you go back to '92, '93, the amount of money that you had locally, that your Board had discretion over, was $143 million. And that was when your total budget was much smaller than it is today. '93, '94, it started to drop, and in '94, '95, because of the E-RAF, you know, that educational realignment formula the state came up with, boom, we were down to less, approximately 50% of what we were only a couple of years earlier. And that wasn't the worst news, because the budget continues to grow in total dollars, we're up to $1.3 billion now in total budget, and our general fund is somewhere in the neighborhood of three-quarters of a billion dollars. But look what's happening to your discretion. With the issue of 4088, which has restricted the money that was replacing the E-RAF money, called 172, you're now down to about $50 million. And I guess if you want to call it good news, we're at least sort of stabilizing at that level. But that's all the money at the present time that your Board has discretion over when you sit down at your budget hearings, the other decisions have been made at a different level. We are hoping that that will turn around after November, and that local revenues will be left alone, and then when the increase in the local ad valorem tax on property goes up, that money will stay locally in cities and counties to help fund those programs.
Can I ask a question on the $50 million discretionary that we have available? How does that compare with other counties or cities? And it's hard to just look at it as a number, but obviously through time it has decreased, but is that happening as a trend throughout the state?
It has happened as a trend throughout the state, and I can't give you a specific answer to that, but I can give you a general answer to it. When we took a look at how we stacked up in terms of our general fund revenues statewide out of 58 counties, I think we were ranked like 55th, almost at the bottom. So it has been worse here in some respects than in other places, but by how much, I don't know. I'll ask the budget people to look at that and see if we can get a trend, to see what's happening elsewhere. I would suspect many of the other counties, the 1937 Act Retirement Plan counties, that they're probably experiencing an even greater erosion on their discretion, because they are going to have to pay for all those pension bonds that they're issuing in order to keep their pension funds afloat, because they increased benefits at a time when revenues were not keeping pace. So I suspect we may improve our position, but we're still not in a great shape.
When you were saying we're at the bottom, you know, 55th county in terms of general fund revenue, is that also in for the discretionary funds? That was really more what I'm looking at in terms of the discretionary funds that are available.
Let me look at those numbers to be sure I'm answering correctly.
Okay, thank you.
But I believe it would probably be, it might even be more magnified, and we may even be lower in that sense.
Thank you.
Because not any other county in California has a 4088. So I suspect we may be close to dead last.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see what else we have on, I think I've got a...
And Mr. Johnson, when you look at that too, to be sure you're doing apples-apples, is to look at those counties that are 37 Act counties, and whether or not they have development in the unincorporated areas thereby generating sales tax. So what's their sales tax revenue source too, which is...
Right, we do have some charts that show the comparison of sales tax collected in the unincorporated areas of counties versus population up and down the state. It's a little bit of a complicated chart, but it's kind of interesting, because we're not at the bottom, but we are, because of our planning regulations, which are orderly planning regulations, we encourage that kind of activity to occur within the urban boundaries. There are places like Sacramento County, the seat of state government, where they have a huge amount of sales tax in relationship to their unincorporated population. So I can provide that for you at a later date. This looks like the same slide, except that by the magic of the PowerPoint, we've now put in percentages, and the reason I've done that is to kind of give you an idea that at one point, in relationship to your total budget, you had discretion over 34%. Today, you have less than 7%, and that kind of dramatically shows the problem. We are now stabilizing that, and that's one of the reasons why it's important for us to continue with the issue of 4088 and other litigation. There are a couple of litigations, one in the retirement plan that I think we have to remain firm on, because if we don't, you'll see that number drop instead of going the other direction, which I'm hopeful next year it will go the other direction. Here are some things that have come up that were not in your budget, and they're always things that come up that are not in our budget, but these are just some highlights. We didn't put a dollar amount on that, Paul, but I think it's well in excess of a million dollars, is it not?
About $650 for general fund.
Okay, so for the general fund to make, to compare the numbers, we have about $650,000 more in health insurance costs, and this is reflective of what's going on everywhere. You know, we had the supermarket strikes over that, the schools are suffering with trying, how do you provide this? There are a couple of issues on the ballot right now, trying to provide health care, but the cost of health care is rising. We anticipated that there would be some increase, but our current numbers were about $600,000 less in the budget than what they will actually cost, so we'll have to make adjustments. We also had the, I don't know whether it was a consent decree or what the decision was from the courts that said that we, as a county, had to have a bilingual ballot, and those costs have to be taken into account, which our clerk estimates at about a quarter of a million dollars. And then we have the payroll costs, which we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the $500,000. This is not additional cost in terms of the payroll budget, but it is money that we cut out of the budget in our effort to reduce the number of layoffs in the spring, and now we're going to have to figure out how to cope with that. We haven't appropriated any new funds for that, we're going to try to figure out between now and June how to adjust to it, but it gives you some idea. The order of magnitude is somewhere between $1 and $2 million in additional costs that are not in your budget that will have to be absorbed. County issues. I tried to list this somewhat in priority, and I start out with the reserve levels of the county. Three years ago, we had a report that was made to the Board concerning a ratio of our cash and to our revenues, and the people in New York who do bond ratings and give us our credit rating, they suggested that while everybody else's reserves during the salad days of the late 90s, where everybody was doing better, had their reserves building up, because of the cost of the public safety obligations that we'd undertaken, our reserves went down. We are still well below where we need to be. Ideally, or not ideally, but as a general rule, 15% is a good idea. We have established as a short-term target to try to get to 10%. We think we will be there within the next year or two, but those reserves have to be built up, otherwise the view is, is that as our budget continues to expand and the percentage of cash that's being set aside for the rainy day shrinks in relationship, the likelihood of getting our credit rating fully restored is not good. So we're on the track, though, to make those corrections. Here's a big unknown, key litigation. As you know, we're in court over 4088, and we are also in court, not directly, but indirectly through the retirement system, on what is being referred to as the Matthews case, and that is where retirees are suggesting that when the pension fund has an actuarial surplus, that that should then warrant additional benefits, and that money should belong to the retirees as opposed to the plan sponsor, who are the taxpayers.
And are they suggesting when we have a negative that the benefit goes away, or...
No. No. That would be a 401K plan, which we have suggested, you know, that if they are successful in their lawsuit, you know, I've said before that I'll be back before the board recommending that we bring the current retirement system to a close and go into a defined contribution plan, which is basically what private enterprise is doing and many other public entities are looking at, because they can't afford the defined benefit plan, particularly if during the good days, they increase benefits, and during the less good days, taxpayers have to reach in their pocket. So, those are two rather important issues, and until they're decided, we won't know what the impact is. We are optimistic that common sense, common financial sense will prevail, both in the court as well as with the community, and we will get those resolved within the next year or so. Here is something that's on the horizon, and it's always on the horizon, but, you know, we had some multiple-year contracts, some of which have already expired and are open, basically on a day-to-day basis renewed. More of those contracts, including the SEIU contract, which represents over half our employees, will expire, I believe, in June. And so, we're back at the table trying to deal with these things. Two major pressures on the management side that drive wages are succession planning and the pressure for competitive wages. We have gone through an extended period of time where the workforce has been static or been reduced, such as the layoffs because of the lack of funds. At the same time, we have held over a lot of folks like me who continue to work, but at some point will be retiring, and they are in many of the leadership roles in your management group. And so, what happens is, is that you'll have kind of bulges in the system as they move through. If suddenly, your senior managers are retired, you're probably not going to be able to grow them all at home for promotion. And so, that will require some recruitment from the outside area. And as we all know, the price of housing is very high. So, trying to recruit people into the area will be difficult if the wages are not competitive, and retaining people will be difficult if the wages aren't competitive. So, aside from unions and labor contracts, there is a need to pay the workforce and the management of the county a competitive wage just for the self-interest of the institution. In addition to that, the job of labor is to, as it was described by, I don't know if it was George Meany or who it was that said that, what is your goal? And he says, "To get more." That's what, that's why we bargain, to do better for the employees. So, all of that is going to be coming down here within the next year in rather large numbers. And so, we have to be prepared for that, and most of the forecasting does include that. And the good news is, is that, you know, we are now at what I would call close to a sustainable level, which means as the revenues grow, we will be in a position to meet the increase in costs, including the labor costs. Here's a couple of sleepers that we should not forget. During tough times, one of the first things you do in order to maintain service and to avoid layoffs is to defer maintenance. You take care of the stuff that's critical, but some of the longer-term capital maintenance, the big stuff, sort of gets put on hold, and you use the Band-Aid approach. There's approximately $15 million worth of deferred capital maintenance that's in the backlog that's going to have to be dealt with fairly soon, within the next couple of years. So, that is out there. And then, on top of that, you have the future capital requirements for construction. For example, with the Juvenile Justice Center opening, right now, we are kind of doubling up using, with the cooperation of the courts, the courthouse to provide office space for the district attorney, the public defender, the probation department for support staff. At some point, that will not be available, as the court requires the courtrooms or the space being used. And so, some provision in the future for an administrative support building will be required out there. We estimate that would cost maybe $10 million in total. It's not something that we have to do immediately, but it is something that we have to think about. You also have the issue of incarceration. We closed down a couple of places where people are detained in this county. One was the Honor Farm, and another, the sheriff's, because of their budget difficulties, has the East Valley Station. At some point, we will have to have an expansion, and when that occurs, that's a fairly large ticket item. That could be $40 million, $50 million. Now, this isn't immediate, but if, when I said earlier, that budgeting and fiscal responsibility is a long-term planning process, that we just can't forget these things. There's a tendency in what they call a cash system, which is you take the dollar in and you pay the dollar out. Some people don't even bother to write it down in their checkbook. They don't encumber anything. And so, they're on a purely cash basis, which can be a disaster when the cash dries up. So, we have a much better approach to it, but we do need to think about what things are not on the, in the budget that will be an obligation to this county in the future. So, we just remind everybody that that's still out there. Then, we have the state issues. I mentioned this earlier. The budget is not structurally balanced. They use one-time money out of a bond issue that got passed. They are using borrowings from local government through the DLF. According to the numbers we have, they project a 05, 06, a $6 billion shortfall, and an 06, 07, an $8 billion shortfall. If the economy starts to really turn around and surge, those numbers could be erased, but they've been talking about that since the days of Gray Davis, and it hasn't happened yet. So, it's going to be a problem for everybody. And since we're a creature of the state, counties will have to do their share in some fashion. If it's just simply that the state can't afford to continue programs that they have been funding, either we will have the burden put on us, or those services will go away. So, they're just things to keep in mind, and I guess that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you...
Do we have questions? Help me with that $500,000 payroll cost that you did earlier.
Okay. The, when the payroll project was put together a couple of years ago, a budget was created.
Got it. I got it now.
Right. And they came before you. Yeah. I was a little aggressive in the reductions in my own office, because the auditor had to maintain her staffing to do all of her tasks, and certain activities, new services through payroll, were shifted to the human resources department. And the human resources department took a huge cut, because it's part of the CEO's office, and we reduced that in order to minimize the number of layoffs throughout the county. It did create some in our office, and so, now, we're going to have to figure out what to do.
Okay.
And it's just a, it's just a pressure that is not financed yet, and we'll have to figure out how it's going to be done.
Okay. Okay. Do we have other questions? Thank you very much. That, that ends our 9:30 item. And again, we have postponed the item 28, our 10 o'clock item. It does mean that we, if we get everything done in closed session, board members, then when we come out for APCD at 11, you'll be done. So, that'll be an incentive, and to incentivize you even more, the CEO has not ordered lunch, so, for your closed session. So, all right. Great. So, we will go promptly to closed session?
Chair Bennett? Before I do, I was wondering if it was possible that our county council could announce a decision that we had in closed session regarding supporting the publication of the Friends of the Santa Clara River case?
Great. Yeah. Thank you.
The Court of Appeal recently issued a, an opinion in Friends of the Santa Clara River versus Castake Lake Water Agency litigation. The decision is unpublished. The board has determined and agreed that it would be appropriate to ask the Court of Appeal to publish that decision, because it meets publication standards. And on behalf of the board, we will write a letter to the Court of Appeal requesting that it publish that opinion.
Thank you. And if I can, I just want to say it is a really important decision, as I understand it, because it requires that water agencies, when they go ahead and decide that there's water available for development, that that water has to make sure it's not contaminated water. So, I think that's, that's an important issue for future...
Great. Thank you for reminding us that we wanted to make that announcement. Anything else? All right. We go to closed session. Thank you.[1148.33]